Meeting tomorrow. Just want to let you know that there's a full board present each night and the town administrators here. The school board chair is present and also Leo Martell is videotaping for the citizens that weren't able to attend the meeting tonight. Linda Nickerson uploads on the YouTube as well as the town site. Okay, our market's whole business on the agenda here to start. An approval of meeting minutes from the previous meeting and I'm going to recuse from the boardroom because I was not attended.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of December 3rd as amended.
And second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Then I'll make a second motion to approve the non-opportunity on December 3rd as written.
Second.
Okay, motion was made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
That I'm going to abstain. I'm going to open up to a quick public comment here. Leo, do you have anything for us today?
No, I'm not.
Okay, that being said, I'm going to go right to the first item on the agenda. Clem Mann's here from the Dunbarton Elementary School Board, he's the chair. How to express the maintenance of the school grounds. Clem, just to give you a little overview, you mentioned it to me a few weeks back, I brought it to the board. There was a little bit, I thought it was a real good idea to start because I do think that there's some maintenance that's not being done over at the school. Spring and fall cleanup, the grass is not always being cut at the same time this one is. And bringing it to the board, I got some feedback from the other people and I didn't realize that there was an agreement between the school and the town. So I guess I'll let you speak to the whole thing and then we'll discuss it and we'll kind of go from there.
Well, yeah, I mean, the agreement is the agreement that we can change anytime we want to.
Yeah. So basically, just for the public, the agreement is that the town entity takes care of pretty much the outside maintenance of the building and plowing.
Plowing.
Provide a snow blower, I think, right?
Provide a snow blower, take care of the trash. I mean, this comes back to the board that was in place in 2015. I think they had an issue with the trash removal.
So anyway, and then the balance of the interior of the building and some of the outside functions are taken care of by the school.
Yeah, the community center, everything else is under us. We figure, I mean, the thing was, since you guys have a summer removal equipment, ostensibly you had the grass cutter. It would make sense to do it all at once, but since.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Since the grass isn't being cut and since it's not being done well, when it is cut, when he's cutting grass around kids that are outside playing recess, I figured, let's put out the bids, he wouldn't mind.
Now, I feel the biggest concern I heard that they want to make sure that the taxpayers don't get kind of double billing almost for something because we have a company doing both properties supposedly now.
If they're around, you don't have companies doing both properties.
Yeah. But we have a, we have a pretty reasonable price going on now, we just want to make sure that it doesn't escalate.
That's fine, and they'll put it out to bid. Whoever's doing it now isn't doing it, so whatever you're paying, you pay for nothing.
Right.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works, but the problem is, is it's not getting done, so that's why we're going out to bid. And if we don't like the number, we won't use it.
Right.
But it needs to be done, it needs to be done in the right manner, and it needs to be done consistently.
Were you made aware of the numbers that we have in place now?
No idea, I mean, it doesn't really matter to us because it's not getting done.
No, but it's, it's just something so you know, you know, okay, this is what they're paying for what they're getting now.
Again, I would say whatever you're paying is too much because it's not getting done. The number's almost irrelevant.
Right. Part of the problem I have is this property over here seems to have always been taken care of better than that property over there.
No, no, I mean, it's.
You have a fairly good job from this side of town, so.
And I don't know why that is, I mean, I really have no idea. It seems, I mean, I think it's something that we do through meetings quite often. You know, you can drive by there, I mean, drove past it this summer, I sent you pictures. I mean, we were in a drought and the grass was still above the high.
Well, without you guys even complaining to us, I know the pond problem, I brought up the leaves in the backside by the police fire station we're building up at a big.
Well, I don't even know if that's on his scope of work, I think he's just a grass cutter, I have no idea, but that's.
Well, he does spring and fall cleanup here.
Well, he's not, that's, see, this is the thing, whoever's doing it, they're not doing it at the school. So I remember you said that he bills twice a year. I don't know who's checking to make sure that whatever he's billing for is doing, but.
Yeah.
If that scope of work is actually supposed to be being done, it's not being done. And I think it's past the point of trying to get him to correct.
Yeah.
So he can rebid every year because that seems to be his forte. We can get, we can take care of the fire station, whole size of it, you know, all that.
Yeah.
And we'll get some competitive bids and we'll watch it down.
Right. Clem, the thing is, you have to be careful speaking absolute, you say it's not being done. Well, some of it was done, but not to the standard that we require.
I mean, it was not being done, I think, in the way that it should be done.
That's better, okay.
To me, means it's not being done.
The good news is his contract's over and we're going to have to put it out to bid and renew a contract this year. Thing is, when we get a contract out, I'll give you an example, different people can bid on it. Cemetery has a new contract and the cemetery did a knockup job.
Who's that? Because I'd love to send them to that.
But the thing is, what I'm concerned with from a taxpayer's point of view, not from a selection standpoint, from a taxpayer's point of view, I hate to see you pay exactly what we paid and almost double the budget to the town. It gets hidden in the school budget, not, when I say hidden, it's a, it's a small line item and the town payers, the town taxpayers get separated and paying double what we.
They're not going to get separated double because if it's coming out of your butt, you wouldn't be paying for it. So ostensibly, if you're still paying the same amount of money.
No, but what I'm talking about, if we separate the two.
Yes.
You do your own contract, we do our contract, and it's like, now you're, we pay a certain amount and then you're going to pay a certain amount. And if it's doubled, then if it's more than what we've been paying aggregate before, we've increased prices to the town taxpayers.
But I think what Clem is saying is the job wasn't being done, so no matter what we're paying.
Okay.
Wasn't enough.
And I agree with you there, I acknowledge I'll agree with you, but I think what we're getting.
We're not looking to increase the cost to the taxpayers, we're looking to get the job done. And I think, I know what you're saying and I agree with you, we're not, we're not just going to go out and pick our number out of a hat and say, this is awesome, you get it. We're going to have a competitively bid.
Okay, what I, what I propose as an alter today, rather than you do it separately, we have a, we're going to open up a bidding process for this coming year. Lee, tell me if I'm right. I recall the contract's coming to an end.
I can look at that.
Well, that works great, if we're doing that, that's awesome. The only thing that this is being spurred from, like, is because it's just not happening.
Agreed, and I think what I would like to do is, you can be on, if, I go on, to be on the selecting process with us.
We can use the bid I wrote and send it out to everyone and include this part of the.
Right, and delineate the exact requirements on paper so the bidder will know what the requirements are.
Right, that's, that's what the bid I wrote in was, it's very specific about the work that we want.
I almost kind of like that there's this separate from the town, so I'm going to tell you why. This is a much more simple area and lawn, and the timings on this section doesn't necessarily correlate to the timing of this. So he could come up and mow this and then, and a different person mows.
I mean, the thing is, if we talk to them about it and say, you can mow the town comment at any time. But the thing is, a part of the problem that we had with the previous contractor is that he would come out and mow during recess. When the kids are on the fields, that's not a good idea.
Agreed.
So, and that was a multiple time thing, so that aside, that's part of what I put into our bid specification is do not mow during, you know, school time. They can mow on the weekends, they can mow any other time because basically, you know, there's, you know, there's.
Clem, if that works out fine, if it works out fine with Davis proposing two different ones, fine, but I don't want to see the amount of money we've been paying and then you doubling. And the thing is, that's not fair to the taxpayer.
Mike, I might say that.
And I don't know what you're looking for.
I don't know, the budget number that I threw out is a placeholder, so whatever that is, don't worry, it's going to get competitively bid. I know Dave probably told you number, but that's basically. It's going to be competitively bid, and so whatever that rating is going to be a fair rate.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know what you've been paying your contractor now.
But I don't think we should go on the record since it's going to be open bidding process, we shouldn't talk about.
That's fine, I mean, it's public, it's public knowledge anyways.
And it's not like you're going to get a bid and not come back, because he's going to get a bid, come back to us and we'll talk about it again when you guys have it.
Basically, you know, if we want to put them all in the same spec, it's just as easy to write in also the town housing and the town offices. I mean, that's two additions.
Well, that's what I was thinking is if you're sending out bid proposals and the towns are probably doing the same thing as either party should refer whoever's bidding to them, that the other party has a section that needs maintained also.
We're not, we're not looking to break this up just to break it up. If it was getting done, we don't have an issue. If you want to put it out to bid as one whole thing, let's do it, that's fine, that's a bigger job, it'll be more competitively bid, it's more work to.
What I'm saying, those, those stipulations, what you delineated, have to be incorporated into the bidding process.
Yes, because I have them written out in my bid specification.
To me, to me, that's critical.
I did see, yes, and I think it would be adequate.
Yeah, but that's, to me, that's the critical process.
And that's the thing that they're bidding on, so they might have a bit of a premium since until June 15th, they can't mow any old time. But most of the summer, they can come in, you know, whenever they like.
And I can say, Clem.
Fully agree with you.
I have not had anything to do with writing up what the guys do currently, and I'm not sure any of these guys have yet either, so. It will be the first time this board looks at what they're doing, what they're getting paid for.
It's a great, if we can keep it all in the same thing, it would be phenomenal. That's easy, I didn't know if you guys were looking to make a change or not, I didn't know what it was, that's why I wrote it out.
In, in my opinion, since he's failed, as a contractor, he's failed on delivering, making a deliverable. That is keeping your grass adequately, that's part of our contract, that's a failure. And the thing is, that's going to go a long way with me as far as him future work with us, because he hasn't lived up to the, to the expectation.
Well, yeah, and I don't know what the bid was, so I wrote a very specific bid about it, which usually the more specific you get, adds a little bit to the price. It means you, you don't have any gray areas where, well, why aren't you doing that? What are you telling me you had to?
I would, I like, I don't mind working together, I don't mind going separate as long as we can keep the price reasonable.
Honestly, if we go together, we're going to get a better price.
That's what I was hoping.
It's one mobilization, but I didn't know where, where you guys were on it, whether it was a grandfather contract.
I don't know if we will get a better price because, you know, keeping them separate, they could price it on the same contract, two different sections.
You can tell them the price that however you want, and if you like one side and not the other, then we'll break it out.
Exactly.
You know, this isn't, I mean, I do a lot with landscapers, this isn't really rockets. It's not the biggest budget line, and I totally get what you're saying, but the fact of the matter is, is that we weren't happy because it just wasn't.
Well, again, I, again, I'm not, I don't want to be critical, but I just was afraid that with a sweep of the pen, that we automatically, just in one meeting, we doubled the budget for.
I don't ever just give away money.
Okay.
You know, especially with landscapers, it's all like, you know, a lot of the properties I manage, this is what I deal with.
We are fully in agreement then.
Okay, Mike, I'm going to bring in to a couple of.
I just have a couple of questions for Clem. So is this what these guys are working actually? So under the current contract, is this fellow responsible for mulching and pruning?
Not for pruning.
No, or mulching, no.
And we have hired a new.
That's new, that's new. Yeah, that's new. Yeah, I would have.
Now we can increase the cost, so there you go.
And that needs, needs to be done.
That's where some of the cost is going to increase.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, I, I write, you know, a lot of bids for this nature, for the company that I work for, a lot. And I deal with it a lot, and it's much easier to be more specific at the front end with anything than it is in the after end.
No, I understand, I'm just.
You can't have, you can't have brush growing into a building, it's not good, you gotta, you know, if you're going to have a bid, you gotta take care of it. We unfortunately only have, you know, one volunteer group which worked on a specific garden out back. They have a hard enough, you know, and they do their best, they're great, we love them, it's a great program. And they're phenomenal, but we can't ask them to do, come out front, and getting people to volunteer to take care of that is just, it doesn't happen.
So we have some homework on our side to do to find out when our contract exactly terminates.
Yeah, we got time, I mean, we don't have to know until.
Right.
I mean, I guess we would need to know by the budget, but I mean, our budget is, you know, we have a placeholder in there, but it doesn't mean it's going to get spent. It's in the event that we sign a contract and you and we come to an agreement, it's.
I would just want to make sure that we keep communicating, I think we have a meeting of the minds here, we're on agreement, we want to keep costs low, but we want to make sure the work is done.
Yeah, I, I have a real big issue for people getting paid for not doing the work. That, that is a problem, and it's not just a one-time thing, it's been going on for years as far as I understand.
We have one more person. Okay, I think we've got a, we've got a path to go now, and I appreciate you coming to the board and all over with us.
Thanks for having me.
It's good to go over that type of stuff.
No, it is, and I'm glad we remembered the memorandum of understanding, and honestly, if we wanted to change it, we could, I mean, it allows us.
From what I remember is, what we do is we get an update every year from our contractor, whether they stay the same or go up slightly, and we sign something new every year.
See his scope of work because I. And also his pricing, because it's really, you know, it's not, and I'm not here to throw anyone under the pause, I mean, you can represent the school.
And also, just to give you another idea, we'll send you the pricing that the cemetery has on their section.
Who does the cemetery?
We have that contract. A1 maintenance or something.
He's had some serious equipment, I seen him down at the previous corner.
And the cemetery has been very, very sound.
That was great.
Because, you know, we had, you know, branches and leaves all built up in the cemetery, this guy has taken care of all that and I haven't gone out to look at it since it was originally bad, but, you know, there were areas in the town that needed addressing. And we've probably talked three or four meetings about different areas in the town, whether it was the cemetery or behind the police department. So it, it has been a process that we've been looking at, so I think it's good to bring it to work.
And, yeah, I mean, and at the school, it's, you know, it's not the biggest deal, if we can get by, you know, if the grass is getting cut, it wouldn't be, you know, it'd be fine.
And the thing is, due to recess, it's stupid.
You know, there's things that were growing up in the chain link fence out by, you know, we had like saplings growing up that grew from years of not weed whacking. We've got slopes and we've got, you know, an overabundance of poison ivy that's just not getting, you know, it's got to get mowed under. And I think there's, you know, what my dad used to call it, the ever shrinking lawn, you know, like, oh, just go fast and all, and everything's in there and you're mowing a postage stamp because you're pushing it back. He blames that on me, I don't think. But it's, you know, it's something that I would rather have it be done correctly and at a fair price than, I don't know what you're paying, but it's not, it's not happening, and that's the issue that we're at.
I think we're in agreement.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so too, I mean, everybody wants.
It was just unclear, I wasn't, last, when it was first brought up, I wasn't really clear of what you wanted to do. And the thing is, I knew there were some complaints being made, but I thought, in my opinion, I thought they were being communicated, they were being addressed, but obviously, there were this, you know, if you're going to address it every other week, that's not working.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I'm not in the building, I just know it's been a constant struggle. And after driving around there a few times this summer, you know, it's just like, what is going on here? This just doesn't make any sense. Then there's areas that get skipped, you know.
No, you have a beautiful looking school with the renovation and then you have a lawn service.
Just in general, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm in property management, I care about curb appeal, it's not the most important thing for a building, but you can do a little amount that goes a long way. It's, you know, we don't have a ton of landscaping as far as beds go or ornamentals or anything like that, but there is a ton of lawn and a ton of leaf and a ton, you know, it's just a big area, so.
You know, I did hear feedback from him at one time because we were asking him to do a better job over there. Some of the sloped areas that were behind the cafeteria had like gardens within the lawn, and then down on the hillside, there was some of that gardening going all within the lawn. You know, he just stayed away from all that because he doesn't, wasn't sure what to do, so hopefully the new person, you guys can specify what to do there and what not.
Yeah, they're not, I mean, I could do it, he could just mow away from it.
Yeah.
That, that's not, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with a guy doing that, I think it was more just not getting done. I mean, you drive, you drive past there and after he's cut it, there's a little triangle out by the telephone pole in front of the fire garden that's still too big tall. I mean, just, you know, that's, I see that stuff constantly, it drives me nuts.
Yeah, I brought that little section up several times myself.
But if we can do it all together, awesome.
No, the thing is, I, I. I just want to say, you know, if we can save a couple thousand dollars to the town, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And the thing is, that's my goal is to, I don't want to, needless to have two separate contracts where we're spending, doubling what we're spending. And the thing is, but again, at the end of the day, the work's got to get done.
The work's got to get done, and I, you know, and I don't know when the last time you had to do this pricing was, and I don't, you know, sometimes, you know, as well, that you get what you paid for.
It was very minor from what I remember.
And it's not, you know, and it may, you know, if you're getting a great price and a great job, awesome, but if you're.
If the work's not being done, then why are we, what are we paying for? Regardless of.
Right, now, you know, again, I think we can get some really good prices, there's plenty of landscapers around, who do good work at a fair price. We'll get them out there, give them a look, walk them around, show them over to you, and I mean, over here, when you guys look out, because you have a garden club comes in and cleans the hell out of the, you know, the town hall constantly, it looks phenomenal. And we, they want to come to the school and they don't blame us.
Well, they did a good job in the behind the school this year. I have those schools.
No, they did, yeah, no, they're, and they're phenomenal, but it's not, you know, you can only ask volunteers to go so far anyways.
And I understand we have a meeting on the 21st, a challenging meeting.
Yeah, with Rainey.
Yeah.
That'll be good. And mostly, you know, that's an early start, maybe we're out of the woods by then, but.
Cross my fingers, but.
The whole, I think the whole point of that is to try to make sure we're all on the same page.
There's some, there's some, I was reading some of the New Hampshire law, they said they actually can move it out months.
Yes.
Down the road, so.
Yeah.
We're going to have to make that call as we go forward.
Yeah, well, I think that Rainey.
Yeah, exactly, but the thing is, you got to be, I think, as a, as a general concept, I don't mean to go into it, but we'll talk it on the 21st, but.
I don't know, how was meeting so short last time?
But the thing is, a lot of elderly people without computers at home, so a remote completely.
Yeah, no, I would rather wait, well.
What's he waiting for to say?
Right, yeah, I think in person goes a lot of way, that's the way.
Is there clarification for somebody from the school board or somebody from the school board, or maybe the Zoom.
Yeah, it'll be a. There'll be a Google meeting and they'll have a public link to call in and, you know, I don't do that, but.
Yeah, I just want to make sure someone's getting me, because I'm, I haven't done it yet.
Don't worry either of I.
And I will.
We'll make sure that it's properly noticed and I'll get to that, I'll have, I'll remind Dr. Castner to do that because we'll have to have one computer there, somebody to start it up, other than that, I think, you know, it'll be all on.
Clem, I just want to say thank you for coming in. I, I feel, I feel much better than I did when I first heard of it.
Yeah, no, it's not, it wasn't meant to be to hang in the bud, I was just trying to, you know.
Make sure the jobs get, gets done.
But again, Michael, you have to remember, there are going to be some increases because the conditions that they have to work under are different. So there's going to, it's going to.
Exactly, and they got to. Once you put specifications like that, you got to assume they agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and then the read, the way I wrote the bid is I don't break it out, so if something looks like, no, we don't want to pay for that, then we're going to break that out, we're not going to ask them to do it, you know, that's, that's.
Yeah, but they're huge money for pruning, we'll skip the pruning.
Maybe we'll get a volunteer in there.
Get your chainsaw.
Be me.
Okay, I'm, I'm with you.
Great, awesome, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Clem, appreciate you coming in.
Appreciate you having me. Thanks a lot.
We'll talk to you on the 21st.
What's that?
We'll see you on the 41st on the line.
Okay. Mike, I'm going to give a few more chances to talk here, we've got some RSAs to accept the donations.
Okay, then, then per RSA, 31:95-B, paragraph Roman number 3B. I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of 15 $25 gift cards, $375 total, from our property owner of Dunbarton to be used in discretion of the welfare director.
A second.
Motion's been made, second all in favor. Discussion first?
No names, okay?
No names. I'd just like to make sure, when you say discretion, to be used in discretion of the welfare director for those in need, it doesn't go back, you know, that makes it a wide open.
Well, that's the way it was written in his letter.
Right. But at the, I've amended to say, instead of just the, at the discretion of welfare director, there's discretion of welfare director in support of needy Dunbarton residents.
Lots of the welfare director does that.
This one. That'll leave it at that. So I'd like to amend the motion to say discretion of welfare director in support of needy Dunbarton residents.
Motion's been amended above, do you second the amended motion?
Sure.
Hey, motions been made and amended and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lee, this person would like to stay anonymous, they'd like to send a thank you letter out from the Dunbarton. Mike, there's one more question.
I would like to make a motion per RSA 31: 95-B, paragraph Roman number 3, paragraph B, accept $530 from fundraising for a retrans Dunbarton. Do you have any money?
Motion's been made and seconded. And we have the funds in hand, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion amended. Okay, the next thing, we're going to go over the transfer station budget with the, with Patrick Rooney phone.
Okay, so.
You can go down through the line, I would go line by line?
Yeah, I can go down line by line, I have some notes, I'll give you some quick overviews. If I gave my numbers correctly, it looks like my budget went up 2.6% or $7,227. Some of my biggest increases were contractual, 4.5% increase on trash disposal, 4.5% increase on demolition disposal, and then a 1% raise, and another increase is the travel allowance. That's in there as well. I was, was under the assumption, and I could be wrong, that you were going to continue with that.
All right.
It seems to be working.
Right, I, I wanted to make sure, because I put it in that line.
It seems to work because at least it's, you're retaining the people that you have now, you know, I lose them.
Right.
I think for the time being, I think the, only consensus that we'll continue that long.
Okay, so starting out on the first is a full time, that number, the $53,005.48, has the 1% plus the travel allowance in there, line there as well. The part timeline is at $88,000, that line has the 1% plus the travel allowance. And there is, I tried to figure roughly in the past, and we still might have to do it this time, we've tried, I've, one of the guys had come in to do snow removal, we've actually tried to work within their hours, so if they had, like this past weekend, they worked three and a quarter, three and three quarter hours doing snow, well, they would try to take it during the weekend so that they, and it doesn't seem to work that way, but we seem to have a not enough time, you know what I'm saying? We would take from their hours, so I tried to do it this time so that their hours stayed the same, and this is a little extra form. And in that line, I also, I changed some hours. The big change, a big change was for my assistant, to give him that, that position, not the person, these are all positions and not the people. That position would go from 32 to 34 and a half, which would give me some extra help on certain days during the week. Wednesdays seems to be a good day that, to get things done, or I can have this person come in and, hey, I'm on vacation. Doesn't have to be quite so tight trying to get his hours here, because he has to do the books on fraud on Saturday and that sort of stuff, so give him a little more flexibility there. And then for another, another change was one part timer, they're going to be coming close on their six months. I put it in here, it's obviously still for discussion, to meet with you guys at some point, to step this person up, up a step. We can go with the DTLs at another time, but I think the person's proven themselves and I think, you know, we should take care of it appropriately.
Before the normal step increases?
Well, yeah, it would be with the, yes, before the normal time, yes. That's the biggest changes in that line. The next line down is overtime, I left that line the same, 1,000, quid merito, I leave that in there. And we have our Frankenstein mores that we have, so if one of them doesn't make it, we're going to have to rent the mower, so that's why that's still there. Our training, obviously, we didn't get a lot of training done this year because COVID, that line the same. Some contractor services, that line the same, that's the commercial, all for me. Supplies went up, naturally, this, this is your, your actual is your actual right now, and it's going to change again, it's going to go up even more. Not my budget side, but what I expended this year, I have some more stuff coming.
What kind of supplies were you putting?
The increase is going to be my strapping, baling strapping, that's like $1,200, $1,200 to $1,500 for a pallet of it. And I'm getting close to needing a pallet, and that's, that's the only way you can really buy it and get a good savings on it. So that's the big increase right there. And I didn't purchase gloves that. And I didn't purchase gloves this year, I'm pretty good on gloves, but that's gonna be another increase, the cut-proof safety gloves are, you know, they're quite pricey, like, you gotta have them, so. And my maintenance line, um, I left that the same, I have some anticipated maintenance that, I think is gonna have to happen next year, I got a piston on the the roll off, excuse me, on the roll-off truck that's gonna have to be recapped, or, um, whatever you can do to it, that's gonna be fairly expensive. It's a very large piston. Uh, department equipment, I left that line the same, I did go for expense, but that wasn't approved off, and there'll be a little bit more for what you guys approved on my, um, lift gate for the pickup.
Okay.
And next line down, telephone, I ran the numbers, it looks like, it looks like for next year, we'll be fine with that number. And then the same for uniforms, we're still working with them. There's a five percent increase, they do a five percent every year, um, so I'm gonna keep it at that, cause that same line is, uh, replacement shoes. And our shoes, at some point, we're gonna have to look at adjusting that policy. A hundred and fifty dollars for a pair of safety shoes is, is getting tough to do. They were able to work with us this year, um, hoping you can do it again for next year, but it seems though, I mean, we were not buying the top of the entire kind of shoes, cause a hundred and fifty dollars is nothing. We would spend two, three hundred dollars on safety shoes. They seem to be running about one-seventy, and I'd say they've been adjusting it for us, I just don't know how much longer they're gonna be able to do that.
Okay.
So, just something to think about. Fuel costs, um, leftovers are same, I, you know, every year we tell you the same thing, it's a crapshoot, you know, whatever the price does. So, I left it the same, assuming we're gonna be, we should be good for this year and should be good for next year, I hope, and the actual, I've been testing. I left that the same, um, it's ten dollars more, but they also have a new facility coming, so their prices could go up. Fees and services, obviously they have one dollar there, so it stays open. MSW this year, this was a tough one to figure for me for this year, cause it's been, like, you know, everybody knows it's a crazy year. With a lot of our recycled material, we get to the trash, and then not knowing what's gonna happen this spring, you know, if we're gonna go back to, or even sooner, it all going back into the trash, you know, should, should things happen, um, and not knowing the, I know this development's coming forward with, you know, there's a forty-seven houses and there's a couple others proposed, you get to try and figure a rough estimate for trash, and I gotta tell you that, it's probably been one of the hardest ones this, this year, trying to figure that. And the other thing, that I'll tell you in this one, there's also a current from Holland that we had Holland in there. And since COVID, he hasn't been in there, and we, I do not come in. So, I'm not sure, you know, if you're gonna have him come back in, if he's gonna be allowed to come back in, that's something that's gonna have to be.
Where he would dump his trash?
That's where he would dump his trash, so, and not knowing what the difference is between what he would have been bringing in, and all this, so it made it really difficult. You know, I jumped the number up considerably high, in hoping it's to cover, you know, cause we're responsible regardless, you know, if we go over, I figured a thousand tons for next year.
You didn't bring it up that high, I don't think, for the times, because then there's still people holding stuff back now that you're gonna win next year, so.
Correct. So in that line, that line went up, will go up to seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents a ton, which is, um, that's our contractual increase. Right now it's seventy-three seventeen. And then down, I bumped that up a little bit, that line there, ob, obviously that's the four point five percent increase as well. That line is going right now with seventy-seven ninety-three, it's gonna go to eighty-one forty-three. So, that's your increase on that line. And let's add this other line here, your hazardous waste collection. I really want to chop it, I can honestly tell you that, but I'm nervous about cutting it. One is, that number you see there, um, I still have a lot of outstanding bills, a lot of material that hasn't been picked up yet. That line's obviously gonna change on my actual expenditure.
Does that line also include the bulk hazardous waste?
It includes the bulk hazardous waste, this year, um, as you remember me telling you, we got a really good deal. Rather or not that deal's gonna happen again next year, I don't know, you know, wherever.
Twenty-two thousand dollars from what you just said.
Right, and that's the lowest expense since I've been here, you know, usually that's a five or six thousand dollar a day for us. So I don't, I really am hesitant to cut it, and then get whacked with a big bill, you know, later, we really have the money to pay for this. You know, I think it would be something to revisit, see how this upcoming year comes, you know, with the COVID, and that's the other thing, and yet, we didn't get a lot of our material that we would normally receive, I don't know where it went, or if it's like you said, they keep us still hanging on to it. Our electronics, I don't, looking at my numbers, it doesn't give us much as much as we would normally share.
It'll all come to you eventually.
Eventually, however, some big increases in that line were, are free on units. This is the, this year's the most, excuse me, the most that we've done, um, did, to date, we're up to two hundred and two units, I think, which is like fifty more than we normally do, and that we knew.
Loads of Home Depot that have fat blocks for refrigerators and appliances coming in, it's hard to buy a refrigerator these days.
That's good for us. And propane, propane tanks are up this year, um, not so much as the cost, but the volume, I'm into from your one pounders to your hundred pounders, I'm into like three hundred tanks right now, and we're waiting to get picked up. So, there was some increases that, I think a lot of people hung up on, go to clean a lot more, I don't know. Um, the last line is the NRA dues, um, I called them, it's not gonna change, it's gonna be one ninety-six, they do, I think she said, I'm probably gonna say it wrong, it's seven cents per capita, times twenty-eight hundred people, that's how they come up with their, um, membership fee.
So the only thing I see here, that you would be able to adjust, if anything, was the hazardous waste collection.
Right, like I said, I'm a little nervous about doing that, not knowing, um, you know, if I, if we, working with both, we are working, excuse me, we are working to get a contract lined up, with this vendor again, um, and actually try and get some numbers in line, but it also, those on the amount of participation that you have, and the amount of material that they collect, right, so, it can fluctuate, but, you know, like, like I said, this year versus last year's number was a big drop, so I, you know, I don't know, it's, uh, it's one of them catch-20 twos, I'd rather, in my opinion, I'd rather go a year and see, make sure that we have the money to cover it, and then a following year, if we have a contract with this company a month a year, and then, you know, we could cut it back some.
Okay. It looks like you'll need it in another area by next year anyway, so.
Right, and the following, we have one more year of our trash con, contract.
Yep.
And that's been, and if I ran the, ran the numbers quickly again, it looks like that will be, uh, when they did that contract, every year is a four point five percent increase, so I blow up again to four point five, and then in twenty-twenty-two, we now put it up to did again. So, those numbers, I think, will be very scary. Just the talk that's out there.
Bob, did you have any questions for him? Mike, you good?
Okay, that's presented, great.
Okay, this one thing, I, I am gonna be coming to you with a little bit of a warning article, I spoke with Mike a little bit about it. If it's okay with the board, I'd really like to come next week, and kinda present it to you a little bit better, um, some of the numbers started to come in today, so I don't know how to go. Yeah, I think it's gonna be this, and it's really not.
Why don't you save all to next week then?
So I'd rather, you know, have something a little more injured in stone, you know, have some pictures that I'll print out so you can actually see what I'm talking about, cause I can tell you all day, but if you can't see what I'm talking about.
Okay. I just wanna make sure there is a true need as well, it's gonna be tough here for a lot of people.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'll express everything out to you, and, you know, let the board make their decision.
Is this the canyon that you're, or is this?
That's so, the swimming pool, David.
Billy Shaw was for the.
But no, big time.
All right, thank you, Wayne. Okay, going on to the next item on the agenda, we got a request from the treasurer uh, to increase the annual salary for twenty-twenty-one to ten thousand dollars. The treasurer's an elected official. And, um, I just wanna, I've read through the ledger that we have here, she did make a request to us for increase in salary last year, and we kept it the same, kept it flat, without a huge amount of discussion, but Lean has put together for some of the other towns that pay their treasurers. Um, I think you guys ought to copy that for review, um, from surrounding towns. If you guys had a chance to go through those. And, you know, there's similar populations as well, I think, too, so.
So.
Yeah. I'm looking at the ones that are close to ours, um, in population here.
So no other hands, so I could.
Yeah, we've got a few that are smaller, um, that pay more too, so, it's kind of a kind of a mixed averages, it's, um, it's a little strange that some of the large, large towns, almost double the population, pay a lot less for some reason. It looks like, um, a lot of those are stifling too, right?
Yeah, there's no way of telling if they do multiple jobs that.
Right. So it could be just a portion of their job. So it looks like it's been since twenty sixteen, since there was an approved change, and at that time, it was a thousand dollar change. Not sure if you guys have that.
You do.
Good.
There's a note here from our treasurer, so they cannot read the attached, um, attachment you sent, but she's done the treasurer for close to thirty years, and there's no comparison going to come from that. I've written, I have requested increase every year, and only to get coal, I think that says, huh?
Coal, which is, it costs a living.
Yeah, costs a living. I requested an increase to ten gate, ten thousand dollars, and you did respond from the select one, I think she speak, well, last year. And we did have some discussion to whether to back to her or not, not positive on it. And right now, it looks like it's sixty-six oh two, and these amounts are public amounts, it's, uh, hundred and one, seventy-one ninety-eight with the one percent increase.
Now, that is, that is even one percent.
Yeah, so you said.
That was six, the one you called it earlier, sixty-six oh two, that was from two thousand sixteen.
Oh, okay, well, that'll be.
That was a lot of raise.
Okay. Forty years, I don't mind addressing this now somewhat, tonight if you guys wanted to, um, looking at these other towns, and the towns that are similar size to ours, the ones that look like it's the same type of job as hers, without being a stipend. We've got one in ninety-three, another seventy-eight. And the end, but I think it's.
Hampton Falls is a bigger town, Tremont is our size, Ashland is our size.
Hampton Falls at two.
Tremont is our size.
Population twenty-two thirty-six. For twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah, they have a lot, they have, in Hampton Falls, they have a lot of, uh, uh, residential, commercial.
You're saying that maybe the treasurer's generally a big problem?
Well, it's, it's a different source of revenues, cause they have a commercial tax versus a residential tax also, you know? Residential on homes and commercials on their properties. I'm just giving you, cause I went through this and checked the size of the county, just for an idea of, you know, where we are with everything.
I wouldn't have any, uh, problem, I mean, a thousand, unfortunately, I just thought, uh, with the one percent increase, it's seventy-one ninety-eight, that's what you found. In one ninety-eight?
I'm, I'm against any raise.
You're against the raise, also, because, how about you, Bob?
I, I don't know, I think, you know, I I got two philosophies, one is, yeah, if we can address raises with elected officials versus doing the every year, cola, so that at the time of election, they set what the pay scale is, so it, some people don't exactly what you're running for.
Yep.
And not in the middle of a term raising the rate up, you can follow me?
I was saying.
So I don't have a problem going with a thousand dollars, and then the next time there's an election, you know, if we raise that rate again, at least everyone knows that that's the rate of pay.
Yeah, that's correct.
In lieu of the cola, or addition to the cola?
In lieu of the cola. Rather than having every year that one little increase, just set the compensation for that position, cause they're an elected official, and at the next election, if you have to change it again, you can make that adjustment.
Would you go across the board for all elected officials then?
Well, at this time, we're presented with the one that's in front of us.
Correct, the thing is, it's hard to discriminate against one versus having a policy.
Well, yeah, but the others aren't running for office yet, so we haven't got a chance to address that.
Right, but she's, she just got elected within.
She's coming up, she's coming up for elections in this next, uh, term, in the next term.
Actually, she just started her first year of three years, this calendar year, twenty-twenty.
She didn't, she just started her term. That's what I was thinking, it's just too early.
Okay, I thought you, you mentioned to me that she was coming up for election.
We thought if she wanted, when I looked at it, she just was running this first year.
You know, I'm looking at a couple of different things here, we got a thirty-year treasurer, and we've also got four years since the last increase of pay for doing that.
Yeah, but she's asking for almost a twenty-eight percent.
Well, I'm not saying give them around twenty-eight percent, I'm trying to, you know, yeah, actually, a thousand dollars doesn't even mean they're halfway in the window. You know, I'm just thinking about a thousand dollars.
Almost a fourteen percent pay raise. And I think, and right now, she's already at one of the highest for the, for the, for the similar towns.
That's not what I'm seeing here.
Well.
Like you said, you got stipends in here, and you've had other towns with four thousand, five thousand people that.
Makes you.
The treasurer is a, a different job, they're having maybe several jobs at that time.
That's with a stipend, but look at Tremont, for example, four thousand people, you only get six thousand, town then deal salary.
Like Lean said, there's no way of knowing if that person has an additional job at that.
That's for the stipends versus salary, look at the, one's a salary, one's a stipend, so I'm looking at salaries, I, I eliminated the stipends. I'm going by salary alone, we have one of the highest paid, um, treasurers in this list, by salary alone.
Well, I'm looking at Hampton Falls, twenty-two thirty-six, for ninety-three hundred.
And what Bob pointed out is that tax, they got a different tax base.
Okay, so if you want to take the list and take the tax base, and those, you're gonna take the list, take the stipends out, we're left in parallel to look at it, you know.
I, we, we should do. I would like to table this in the, maybe when we talk about other raises across the board, cause we've already talked about a one percent raise, and now, um, I, I just can't see how we pick out one elected official and give them a fourteen percent. I don't think that's fair to that elected official, and I don't think it's fair to the town employees, why shouldn't, well, transfer station, it'll be fourteen percent increases.
Why shouldn't, the transfer station don't have a 14% increase this year? We haven't had pay raises in a long time. I know you're saying that, but you should look around at the other raises we've done for different departments over the last couple of years. Absolutely, and I think it's the fact that we include the cost of living with elected officials, I think is fantastic. We haven't excluded them from that fact. I know, I'm just saying, like, another department, we give them raises, too. Yeah. That'll come before us and ask. You've got a person here that's asked at least twice now, that I've been on the board, and we haven't addressed it.
Okay, can I drag you guys to a different position then?
Sure.
Put out to round it up to 8,000.
Okay.
Okay, would that, would that pull you in, Mike?
I could be a little more memorable. We don't always all have to, man. Yeah, we don't always.
No, but I'm just saying, you know, in this way, if you're a member, sort of went that way, you know? Just bring it to 8,000. You know, you're just rounding off the number.
You know, I think we did kind of push this aside last year with them bringing the person before us and discussing it more, and I think that.
Probably had we known they were running.
Yeah.
Then we could have, then we could have addressed the different methodology of trying to treat this whole thing. That way we'd keep it to.
If you'd like, I can make sure that I let her know that before she goes up numbers for the next term that she needs to meet with the board to discuss her salary.
Yeah, that would be a better way to go about it. No, I think that that would be still unfair. I think, because, you know, just because you bring one elected official, maybe what happens if she has two other people running? Do we bring those people in who discuss the number or two? The fact that she's running, she has no bearing upon whether she comes in and talks to you. Leo could come in and want to run for it, and do I invite Leo to come in and talk about his salary? I don't think, because he doesn't have any bearing on that. I think the fact she's talked to us now is one thing, and we can address it now. Just because she's pending an election should have no bearing on it.
Okay, I was working with.
No, I understand you, and that's when we can address it, but not from the individual's point of view. We can address it from the position point of view. Does that position require me? We can look at it from other towns' standpoint, but it has nothing to do with the individual.
Yeah, I understand.
I'll make a motion then to increase the position of the president. The annual pay from the treasurer to $8,000.
And will it be based on the county?
The approval of the mayor. That'll set the motion.
A motion made, and second, we've had some discussion already, all in favor? Or do you want more discussion, Mike? Just, how many hours does she put in every week?
I know that she has to be readily available for any type of situation that comes up where we require a transfer of funds on a short notice basis.
I don't remember going over her hours last time we met, I just don't remember what they were. No, I don't want to pay someone, I think the town clerk puts a lot of hours in, she doesn't get $200 an hour. She'd like to. She's pretty tiny job. I know. No, I like to defer, I like to defer the vote for one week. We've got time, it's not going to go on effect right away, so I guess I can put on the agenda next week, the final vote. Okay, Mike, we'll hold off for one week, I don't have a public.
You want to table it for a week?
Table it for a week and we'll move on to another subject.
Okay.
I can, I need an answer to that, how many hours she puts in? I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, she comes in and does her checks, but I'm not sure how many hours she puts in. And I think is, we have a lot of other hardworking elected officials in town that. I don't have any problem, it's been this board's, it's been this board's purview to move things down a week or so, we'll get a better look at different items if one board member or two would like to look into it further, we've done it on several different subjects and I don't mind doing them at all. Thank you. Okay, so that one's done. And now, Lean, I don't have any paperwork on this, but I think Bob wanted to talk with us about as well. The increase in COVID-19 cases in the town and the way we do business. Looks like there's 22 active cases with a total of 61 cases coming from our town. And that's as far as 1210, 2020 per chief of wagon.
Yeah, there's still quickly from 39 to 61.
Yes. And I think it's pretty much around the state. I've looked again at our, I always do the calculations because you've got some towns in New Hampshire that are up at 4% or 6%. And so I look at our 2,800 plus or minus people and look at, you know, the total and then the active, and I really look at the active. We're still below the 1%, so I was hoping that we'd stay in that, in that range, you know, below the 1% but. I'm concerned about the health of our employees. I think it's, transfer station gets infected, goes down, town clerk gets infected, our office goes down, same with Lean's office. I think it's, we were very strict in the beginning of the year. I have no problem going strict and going back to by appointment. And the thing is, I have to hit the town clerk on that, too.
I wouldn't mind going back to by appointment. Mostly because of this most recent spike is due to Thanksgiving. We're looking at Christmas in a few weeks, we're going to see another spike.
Yeah.
I would, I would just love to go to by appointment just until these two spikes are down.
Yeah, was it gonna be your department only, or did Judy do it last time? I don't think Judy ever did a by appointment, right?
We did the whole building.
The whole building, which showed everyone.
And one of the things I was thinking of, if just one of us, Lean, me, Hope, anybody, comes down with COVID. We shut the building down to disinfect it, there are no appointments. At least this is giving the public an opportunity to, to be served. And if we wind up, God forbid, somebody comes down with it, nobody gets served.
If you remember, even the building department was by appointment, they were so it's closed off, and when they come in, probably, you were checking temperatures the last time.
We do have our temperature.
Because that's what you shouldn't be doing, they shouldn't be wearing a mask, they shouldn't be checking their temperature. So I'm gonna push it forward. You know, it's good enough for the van, and you have to know anybody who's visiting. It should be good enough here because you're gonna get, you know, you have no control over anyone that's coming through.
I see the most traffic, so it would impact my people the most. But we had the baptism by fire when we closed last time. And now we can reapply rather than reinvent. We've, we've come up with a system, we've come up with one that works. What I would do is not make it strictly no, no outsiders in the building. I would set up my people who can't do it online or by mail, by appointments. And they could come into the building. It wouldn't be as much work as it was before, but we were running things in and out the door and putting things out for them to pick up.
But generally, the doors would be locked permanently.
The doors would be locked. I don't, I won't do it if the board decides not to shut down the whole building. But just given this spike and how rapidly it's increasing, it's several active cases every day for the past few days. And this is what they.
You've had one resident, I mean, that wouldn't wear a mask.
I have, I've had a couple.
You know, and so if you don't have, you don't have really an area for social distancing. And everybody's gotta pass by them if they're going to the selectmen's office or leaving Judy and going out the door.
We have a three-way there.
At this time, what, what we are, we are looking at for numbers, and you haven't been hitting all of Thanksgiving's numbers yet according to the CDC, you know, it's gonna increase. And you're coming into the holiday season where people usually have parties and whatever. I mean, they're having plenty of.
Good morning, America. Good morning, America had a neat little demo on this morning. And they show that, you know, even people who have masks, you know, you still expel some, some of your red comes out, right?
Only it comes out.
You know, right, it all comes out.
It doesn't go straight forward.
It doesn't, so they were saying that the shields are great, the acrylic shields we're using, combined with the masks are great. But that virus stays in the air.
Unless you have big cheeks like I am.
It does, it stays in the air. So today I threw the windows open for five minutes, turned the fans on, just to exchange the air. This is such an old building, we can't exchange the air without opening windows.
Go once further, do we apply to the transfer station where we put everything in the mainstream trash? What do you, you want to, I think that would be a prudent idea, or what do you think? Again, you, you go down, you're, you go down, we gotta trash my house, I don't like that.
Right.
I am. At least you aren't touching the stuff. What's that? I say at least you aren't touching the stuff. How about the money, are you exchanging the money, are, you know, stuff coming out of the refrigerators and stuff now? Yes. Do you feel a need to close that off at this time?
I think if it gets worse, then we should do so. I just, I'm torn both ways. Obviously, I don't want to see the material go in the trash, I don't want to see my equipment sick either. For us, it's work either way. You know, we go to the one line again. Right, one line dumping again. That's gonna involve, I think this time, a little bit more with, the police department is doing their patrol.
Well, we are one line dumping.
Right, but I mean, as far as, when he gets busy, we have to open that stuff outside. It is, it is, you just, you can't not do it.
But then the person coming through closes, goes up to the other.
If, you know, the, no matter how you do it, no one's gonna be happy, no one's gonna be all right. It, it's a tough situation right across the board. You know, if we leave it open and somebody gets sick, we're gonna be a fault. If we close it down and we do just trash and somebody gets sick, we're a fault. I'm really not sure how to answer your question because I don't have an answer. No matter what we do, it's, you know, so we shut it down and we do a rotating schedule with the guys, the crew. Then they lose some hours, so that's tough on them. We do that, now the police department, more than likely, is gonna end up coming down more frequently just from the issues that happened last time. And so now you got some more involved later, I don't know, I don't know how.
Well, the good news is, I think the town has been trained on the self, self recycling. And that, people are doing that now.
I'm after the guys and myself. You know, we're pushing the mask a lot more, they're, they're wearing the mask, they're supposed to have all the time. Well, above the nose part, that's been a big issue.
We have PPE down there.
I have actually signed a veranda, this, this guy. Doing a PPE.
Well, if you feel a need, you don't have to wait for a meeting, you can call on Lean, Lean will get ahold of us and we'll get a consensus in the board. We need to make changes.
The ones right now, is, is they're coming in. And also, when they're coming in, it's once in a while, I see this happen, because you guys are busy inside.
Right.
You'll see two or three people passing each other, where it should be at least one person getting rid of their stuff. And most of the time, guy, people are polite.
Right.
They'll wait, and once in a while, they get a bunch here and it's two or three going, trying to go rob each other. There's no social distancing, there's nothing, you know? So you might want to monitor it and see, and come back to us, you know?
I'm looking at our selectmen's schedule, because I was gonna talk, we guys talked about this at the other night, but since it ended on this. We're on the 10th now, we are meeting on the 17th. And then we don't meet for Christmas and we don't meet for New Year's, so we're gonna be off for a couple of weeks. But after that, I think that as a selectman, if it stays up on a higher level, we should be meeting every other week because meeting every week, having the three selectmen here at the meeting at the same time. If we, one of us comes down with it, the other two get it, it's gonna be a rocky road for a while, so. We can either meet every other week and just keep our schedules a little bit longer than one night. Or we should look at maybe having alternating, every week, one selectman stay home just so we don't spread it if somebody does have it.
Or call in.
Or zoom in. Call in, zoom in, whatever you want.
You know, I mean.
And for the town offices, you want to make it effective Monday, they pull by appointment? I would say that would be wise, we'll do that. And we'll monitor it and we'll open it back up as quickly as we can. If we see that dropping down, we'll, we'll open it back up. Let's list it on the town website and what do you put on the bulletin about it? And let's hang up some notices and let it go.
Let's offer the notice.
And what do you keep us up to date? If you need, don't wait for a meeting, just call Lean, we'll do a consensus, okay? And making small changes, not taking money, not taking, you know, refrigerators and the metal objects that you use. In fact, we had one construction degree is cost now, yes?
Oh, yes.
But we, we, if we had to, we could, we could waive that again.
I.
To avoid money, just something to think about, not saying, I'm not mandating it.
Right, I would say, one of the saving graces for us versus in here is we are outside.
Yeah.
I think that's.
And you know, usually, usually gloves there for collecting the money and all that.
And the other thing is attracted, instilling these guys to stay away. And they were checking the bins pretty regularly, I say, look, stay away, let them dump it. And if there's a mistake in there, when people clear out, they go in there. And they see it there, they're getting it, and it's, you know, it's working, so it's, it's all rolling.
And I think is, you go, the residents have started to become trained to. So we'll discuss our schedule later only because it's not gonna affect us till at least January. Correct. Okay, well, let's keep an eye on the cases.
And you, you still have issues with budgeting and wars. So we make, have to make sure we can adjust that. And it's only fair that we all participate, so if one does it by phone one week or whatever.
I just want to make sure we stay safe as a, you know, we're the board that runs the entire town.
If something happens, hopefully, we'll shut down, you'll be masked.
Okay, on that subject, Donna from the building and planning has, has the attitude to do a lot of the Zoom meetings. And because of the projects coming before the planning board in the next couple of months, she wants to be a little bit proactive, she checked in with central regional planning. A problem that she was having doing the personal laptop with the Zoom meetings that she's currently been managing. It's not enough to either set up in a meeting room here where they can have a broad camera. So I've given her the okay to expand by a large monitor, by a wide angle camera and a good microphone. What she needs to either get set up here, you know, or she has to take the whole project to the community center. And I think going forward, I, I'm, from what it's sounding like, we may find that we're gonna end up using that as well.
And it armed the, my, with the planning board. I chimed in and gave her the thumbs up on it, too, we'll use the COVID money to do the purchase. She's purchasing what NHMA already has, they know it works, the Zoom meeting works, good on it. It's a centralized microphone that can, everybody can speak into. So it's something that's already been used by the state. And she's gonna follow that same course of action and set it up. And their meetings, even if they have a public meeting and somebody wants to chime in that doesn't feel safe coming in, has to be able to do that. So it makes their meetings a little bit different, they have to have that flexibility, if somebody wants to zoom in or call in, they, they have that. So I thought it was a good idea as well, it's very, very low on money, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Leo, thank you, had your hand up earlier, are you on sound?
Nope, I'm off the hook.
Okay, everybody good on this subject? All right. All right, now we're gonna move into a, a non-public and we're gonna give Leo a couple minutes to play a rubber game. And let me just go around here one more time, is there any public comment here, we'll keep it here? Where do you go?
Just one quick thing, Jeff dropped off the material today for the pad.
Okay.
And we filled the pad, so now we just leave it for the committee.
Yeah. Okay, great.
So that, the woman that I spoke to, I got the invoice, she is expecting a delivery anytime. One of those is earmarked for us, it's just a matter of knowing which day. And she's got the information to reach out to Woody for that delivery.
So Lean and I flagged the check today to hold that check until she sees the delivery.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I'll have the check, because of the community, I would spend it on her.
Okay, Mike, you want to read the RSA for non-public?
You don't want to read it.
Are we saying yes afterwards? Oh, do you want to do that for the, we typically say it to the end, but. Mike, do you want to give any comment to the public before, if most of them believe it? That is that. Well, did you have any?
Yeah, I'm just gonna bring up a few things. Over at the library, the new door closer is leaking hydraulic. So I think it's probably one of the inexpensive ones. Because it was looked at by the locksmith. And he did what he could, but it was still leaking hydraulic, so you may have to replace that door closer.
Wasn't that just bought last year?
I'm buying it brand new.
Yes, it's a year old, and like, you know, usually you have a warranty on it, warranty. So they might want to find out from whoever put it on, if it does have one to begin with. And depending on where they got it, that would depend on what you have for warranty, because usually they're for a few years. The other one is the Plexiglas. And that might be because it's probably hard to get Plexiglas right now.
Right.
Because he hasn't been able to do anything, is it Greg?
Yeah, yeah.
Put it to the dryer.
So that has not been installed yet? So, that has not been installed yet?
Have, he hasn't come back, but it's possible, you know, you might want to check with him, but it's possible that plexiglass is hard to get right now.
Oh, yeah, those, these here, the back, were, shortly after we ordered ours, so we'll force that.
A little ramp over here, I guess, outside this door, the boards are a little spongy.
Yeah.
So, that might be something to look at, uh, and the one that's gonna be difficult to address is the ice falling off the roof of the town hall, because, you know-
Did we put those signs up here, do you remember?
I don't know if they put them up yet, but, because they come down, but even if you had a roof down bottom here, and that catches that roof, that's, that would be pretty bad, and we don't know what they're gonna do on that side, remember, they're gonna blow that out, and it's gonna go up above the second floor.
Oh, there're gonna be flat ceilings on that, so the flat ceiling internally drained down.
Right, but that ice is gonna come down on that.
Yeah.
You, you follow me?
Yeah.
So, at least it would get in the way, so if we put something in the way, it's gonna come down within a couple of years, maybe?
Yeah.
If, if it passes, you know?
Lean, can you double-check, make sure that signage is out?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Okay. Is that really gone?
So, those are the things that I can remember.
All right. I'm gonna go through the mailbox quick, one we just talked about, Donna purchasing that, um, uh, using the COVID money to do the large monitor.
They want to use COVID or just use the budget? I mean, they're both gonna be allowed.
We have the money there.
It's just gonna be, um, tracking all the expenses, so you want the COVID, we-
I think we should, and it's there for, so what?
Well, it may, it may make it, if we get audited for any reason, like how you spent your COVID money, this would be one way of making, making it clean.
All right.
Okay, so that's from the large monitor, wide-angle video camera, COVID microphone, wiring, additional accessories, um, for that workstation.
All right.
Lean brought it to our attention this week, um, we inadvertently left one of our highway workers out from that, um, five hundred dollars that we offered as that one-time COVID payment to our employees, so she added that one. And then the last one I have here is that, um, Monday, December twenty-first, we'll have that Zoom meeting. Uh, that we spoke about. Um, and then we'll collectively have our town meeting discussion with the town moderator, school board, board of selectmen, to see how we're handling the town meeting. Uh, there was recently a joint loss meeting, um, the joint loss had the road agent there, fire chief Bob Bartellus, his selectman's rep, police chief, um, transfer station, Woody was there, Mary Gerard from the library, and Linda Lander, the town clerk.
Donna was there, obviously.
And Donna. And Jeff is the chairman, they had their, uh, joint loss management. Bob, do you have any, you want a review on this?